Good morning. We are ready to start our meeting, a Board of Commissioners for the Jacksonville Housing Authority, August 23rd, 2021. This is a special board meeting. I am Commissioner Harriet Brock. For the benefit of the commissioners that didn't hear me, when you get ready to speak, could you please state your full name for the report reporter? The time is 9:09. I believe we have a commissioner online, some commissioners online. We would like to open up for approval so they can participate. We do have a qualm of four commissioners in the, I mean, five commissioners in the room. Those commissioners that's online, could you please state your name? Okay. Okay, they're not there. Do we have any public comments? Could you state your name, please? Oh.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll hand over the public comments.
So we want to approve for?
The approval for the general consensus of electronic participation.
Okay. All right. All commissioners in favor?
Aye.
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 Through the chair? I'm sorry, not technically the chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Lysikia Hodges, Office of General Counsel, coming to you from the great state of Pennsylvania. We cannot hear you. I wanted to let you know it's very faint. So if somehow for the benefit of those 20-plus participants that are attending virtually, if somehow we could get the technology where we can hear you guys, that would be great. And if it helps any, I know Mrs. Brock, when you started the meeting, I could hear you, and then you sort of faded away, the volume faded away. So I don't know if that was a matter of you just speaking into the mic or turning the mic on.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
So I can hear you. I see Ariel is saying it's still sort of faint, but that is much, much better than what it was probably three minutes ago.
Okay, testing. Can y'all hear me now better?
I can hear you. Ariel, are you able to hear her?
I can hear her, but it's like you guys are just going to be looking at the side of my ear for the whole meeting. I have my volume up at 100, and it's just very faint. I will say like when Commissioner Walker, I think, voted, I could hear him great. So I don't know if there's any difference, but I just can't hear you very well, Ms. Brock.
Okay, can you, Commissioner Green, can you say something? Let's see if they can hear you.
Andre Green.
Commissioner?
Oh, yeah, that was excellent. So Mrs. Brock, it may just be that you need to project a little bit louder as you're speaking into the microphone, it sounds like.
Okay. Commissioner Mercer, can you say something, please?
Yeah, we can't hear this commissioner at all.
What about now?
Right, much better. It's about the same level as Mrs. Brock, I think, but Mr. Green, we could hear him really loud and clear.
Is this better?
Much better. Of course, there's some feedback, but we'll take it.
Commissioner Phillips?
Morning. Morning.
Yes, we can hear Commissioner Phillips. Not as good as the other two, but well, that's good enough. I mean, I can make it out, so thank you.
Ariel said that it's a little bit, she can hear you a little bit. Can y'all hear me better? Okay, thank you. So maybe, Antonia, if you can do what you did to our mics, maybe they can hear Commissioner Phillips better, because they only can hear her a little bit.
Good morning. Oh, they say that's good. Okay, okay, so we got everyone. Thank y'all for your patience. At this time, the Board of Commissioners are ready to select officers for the Jacksonville Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. Our first officer is Chair. I'd like to nominate myself for Chair.
Ms. Brock, I'd also be interested in running for Chair, please.
All right. Anyone else? If that being all, we have two candidates on the floor for Chair. Can I get a motion for? Are we get a motion for both of our candidates, Ms. Lysikia, one at a time?
Right.
Okay.
Right. So to the commissioners, there's a couple of ways you can do this. So you have two candidates that nominated themselves. So if any one of you, including any commissioners that are participating by phone, would like to make a motion for, you know, whoever you're in favor of, you could do it that way, and either that motion will be approved or it will fail, leaving either a new Chair or moving on to the next candidate. The other way that you can do it is slightly more cumbersome is to actually hand out pieces of paper, put your name on the paper, write who you're voting for as Chair, you know, count those votes out loud, have to do it in a very transparent way, and figure out who has the most tallies. So, I mean, because it's only two of you, if one of you wants to just make a motion for whoever you want to make the Chair, it's either gonna pass or it's gonna fail.
Okay. I make a motion to for Chair for the Jacksonville Housing Authority for the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, so it looks like that, and I'll help you along. It looks like that, I didn't hear a second. So if there was no second to that, then someone would need to make a motion for the other candidate, of course.
I'll move to nominate myself as the Chair. Somebody needs?
Somebody needs to second to have you as Chair.
Yep.
So someone needs to second his motion to nominate him as Chair? And then we vote on?
Right. So basically, this is the vote for your Chair. And so you need a motion. Any member can make a motion, and any one of you at this point can make a motion, because you don't have a Chair. And for any motion, you need a second.
Okay. I'll second. And then we vote for it, correct?
Correct. And since you don't have a Chair, I'm happy to move this along. So we have a motion by Commissioner Walker to move himself as the Chair. We have a second by Commissioner Green. All those in favor?
I have a question.
Can we discuss the motion move?
You certainly can. Of course, you can discuss it. Thank you, Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you. My question to you, Ms. Hodges, is our bylaws, based on our previous action, how many votes are needed to move forward?
Thank you to the Board, to Commissioner Phillips. You need four votes to pass any action. So when you approve your bylaws back in June of this year, there was a motion to delete that language out of your bylaws as it was presented to you at that meeting, but that motion failed. So you need four affirmative votes, at least four affirmative votes, to pass any action.
That was the, my concern at our last meeting with voting, because there was some differing of what action had been previously taken, as you all know, and we did not have the minutes in order to certify that. So I did not feel that we could take votes at that time based on not having those minutes and not having that clarification. Some were of the opinion we only needed three votes in order to move forward. So thank you for that clarification.
Is there any more discussion?
Yes, Ms. Lysikia. So just to make sure we're clear, that we are only voting on one commissioner at this time for Chair. Am I correct?
That is correct. The motion on the table, of course, is for Commissioner Walker. So if this motion fails, you'll need to nominate someone else. If the motion passes, then Mr. Walker would be the new Chair and convince, take over the meeting, actually, from that point.
So if I may, it's a bit awkward speaking on my own nomination, but I will. I do believe, Ms. Brock, I appreciate everything you've done, and I would like to see you involved in the executive level. However, I do think there's an opportunity to expedite some things, move some things forward, and I think it's prudent that we have somebody that's at the Chair that has the ability to dedicate some more professional resources to it. But Ms. Brock, I want to thank you, and I want to be very clear that I'd be honored if you were to vote for me. I would be honored that if you would serve in one of the other positions, because I think your voice for the residents is, carries a very large, carries a very large weight in this room, and I think that's extremely important. But the votes will fall where they will, and I appreciate everybody voting.
Is there any more discussion for many commissioners? So then we are ready to take this to a vote. All those in favor?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Ms. Lysikia.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I have another question. Can I ask a question to?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Commissioner Walker, can you explain to me, when you said that there should be someone more, that can bring more to the table as the Chair? Can you explain that?
Sure. So Commissioner Brock, I think part of what the Chair should be working on more steadfastly is some of the policies and procedures. And I think that's a Chair's responsibility, and it requires a, an expertise, so to speak. And that's what I've, you know, been trained to do over the course of, you know, 15 years of practicing law and doing those things. So that's not a, let me be clear, that is not in any way, shape, or form meant to be a knock on anybody in this room. But I do think that that level of expertise, you know, the level of specifications, the level of legal thought process in some of the things that we're facing would be helpful as the future Chair.
Okay, thank you. Call a question, Ms. Hodges?
Okay, perfect. So no need to call the question, since it appears as there's no more discussion. So all those in favor of appointing Commissioner Walker as the Chair of the Board? Vote yes?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, are there any commissioners, Dwayne, by phone, that we need to take the vote of? I'm not sure.
Yes, I think Ms. Annabelle Fernandez.
We can't, I couldn't hear what you just said. Could a commissioner maybe could repeat that?
I think Ms. Annabelle Fernandez, Commissioner, Ms. Annabelle Fernandez.
Mrs. Annabelle, are you on the call? Okay, I don't hear her, so I assume she's not on the call. And there's five members present, so it looks like that motion was approved. Was it four to one?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So at this time, since you have a Chair, I will pass it over to Commissioner Walker. Congratulations to preside over the rest of the meeting as Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges. Again, Ms. Brock, thank you. And I will accept nominations at this point in time. We're gonna move on to the voting of the Vice Chair. I will accept nominations from the floor for a Vice Chair, and I'd be open to any nominations at this point.
Commissioner Rosalynn Phillips, I'll nominate myself Vice.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Any other nominations from the floor?
I'll nominate myself, Harriet Brock.
Thank you, Ms. Brock. I have two nominations on the floor. Any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none, I'll stop the nominations. Can I get a motion for either Ms. Phillips or Ms. Brock?
Aye.
Nope, I need a motion to approve one or the other.
I motion to approve.
Which one?
For both of them to be nominated.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table for both to be nominated. I'll move that Ms. Phillips be nominated as the Vice Chair. Will there be a second to either a motion to approve both, in which case we'd have to do a paper vote, or there's a motion on the table for Ms. Phillips direct? Will there be a second to any of those motions?
I second.
Through the Chair, if I may, I think to be in proper posture, we really just need one motion on the table.
Yep.
And so which motion is actually on the table? We can only move one motion at a time.
Commissioner Green, would you be willing to withdraw your motion at the moment?
Yes.
Great. And so I have a motion on the table from Ms. Phillips for herself, correct, Ms. Phillips? If I can get a second of that?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of appointing Ms. Phillips as Vice Chair of the Jacksonville Housing Authority Board of Directors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
No commissioners online. The motion carries by a vote to four to one. Congratulations, Ms. Phillips, Vice Chair of the organization. Thank you.
Working with you.
You as well, Ms. Phillips.
And the entire board.
At this time, I will open up the floor to a nomination to Secretary of the Board of Directors, and I would like to nominate Ms. Brock for this position. Seconded. Thank you, Commissioners. I have a motion and a second to nominate Ms. Brock as Secretary, if you're willing to serve, Ms. Brock?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion and a second on the table. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move the question to a vote. All those in favor of nominating and approving Ms. Brock as Secretary of the Board of Commissioners, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none. Congratulations, Ms. Brock. You are the Secretary of the Board of Directors. The vote passes unanimously. To the Commissioners, thank you. We have a good standing board with Chairs and appointments at this point, so I appreciate that. We're gonna move on next. Matter of, we're gonna reorganize the agenda at the Chair's discretion here. I do think at this time, we'd like to move into the public comments to make sure we have those taken care of before we continue the meeting. In your packet, you have received certain public comments that were brought to the Board's attention. Those public comments, I would ask that they be entered into the official meeting minutes so that they are part of the record. Does anybody have any, before we open up to true public comments, any questions regarding these public comments, the packet that was given? Ms. Hodges, I assume we can skip with reading these into the record, correct?
Yes, through the Chair, you can. If the Board members all have copies, and you were provided those copies of the written public comment, you can certainly, it's already in the record.
Fantastic. Is there any questions on these comments before we open it up to the public at large? Hearing none, we will open this up to comments to the public at large. I do ask that if you were going to publicly speak, first, please be reminded that you have three minutes to speak, and we will be enforcing that three-minute rule. Second, I do ask that if you want to speak and you're online, please announce yourself, announce your name and address, and please wait to be recognized. If there's multiple people that speak at the same time, we will take your name down and make sure everybody gets a chance to speak. If you are on Zoom, please make sure that you raise your hand or unmute yourself so that we can make sure we recognize you. At this time, I will open the floor to see if there's any public comments from any member of the community at this point in time.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Sanchez from Brentwood.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. We hear you. Please go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to, first of all, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'd also like to say, Ms. Brock, I commend you, because I believe you've done a wonderful job as Chair. You are one of the ones who closely work with the residents here. So I felt Ms. Brock would have been a perfect choice for the Chair this time, because she works with the residents. And I hope the newly Commissioner or Chair, Vice Chair, begin a relationship with the residents, because as I'm told, that is who you serve. And you cannot serve us if you do not know us and know our needs and our wants and our desires. I hope this new elected Board decides to give Mr. Alexander the position as permanent CEO and not just an interim. Three years is long enough, and it had, should have been done years ago. I also would like to mention Fatima Johnson, who was a pillar here in the community. And I'm not sure of the circumstances in which she was terminated, but I need to let the Board know that she did work with the residents, and she was loved, and she did help the residents. I thank you for the time that you have given me to speak my truth, and this is what I know and not hearsay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez, for that. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at public comment, please?
Yes, I will.
Can you state your name, please?
Yes, I will, Mr. Chair. My name is Mrs. Delaney Williams, and my address is 4686 University Boulevard North, Jacksonville, Florida, 32277.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Go ahead.
First and foremost, I too want to thank you all for this opportunity. I, I'm a newbie here. However, I've been very involved in the community for over many years. And I guess I first want to say to you, as the newly elected Chairperson, to the august members of the Board of Directors, and to the august interim Director, and to all of you that are either on Zoom or at hand. I'm honored to have this opportunity to speak before you, to express my position on defining why Mr. Alexander, a man of great integrity, well-educated, well-experienced, and one who's very well-prepared, should be considered a permanent status. If you've not had the opportunity to review Mr. A.'s background, I challenge each of you to just take time to do so in a more personable manner, in mean that I do believe there is a video presentation that he can share with you. I guess what I would like to say about him is, what a man. As, as I was thinking about this, and I perused the agenda, I can truly say that we all here today are blessed, because we above ground, and we have life, and we're in our right minds. And most of all, I think we're in good health. But most importantly, I know that each of you feel a sense of security. What I mean is, for those that are permanent employees or in a permanent status of your company, or those that have been working a while and can be a part of the pension, I ask you all to search your hearts. And when I say search your hearts, this is a very critical situation, a decision that really needs to be made for someone who's well-prepared for the position. My other question, is it really right? Why would anybody want to treat an individual in such a manner? How could you do it? I have an extensive background, and I too have been mistreated on numerous occasions. But one thing that I can say today is that God knows all of our hearts, and most of you know, some of you may not know, but the Scripture says, vengeance is mine, says the Lord.
Ms. Phillips?
I must be honest, I'm not happy because of why this?
Your time is up. I do appreciate the comments, but unfortunately, your three minutes has been exceeded. I apologize.
No problem. Thank you for the opportunity.
I'm sorry? A, is it a Ms. or Mrs. Turner? Ms. Turner? Ms. Turner, anybody else? I believe we have a Ms. Turner who's raised her hand, requested to speak, but is there anybody else as well?
Here I am, Ms. Turner.
Hi, Ms. Turner. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address, please?
My name is Ruthie Turner. Address 847 Village Center Drive North, Apartment 102.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Please go ahead.
Okay. I'm speaking on the behalf of Fatima Johnson. Fatima has did a lot, a lot for Brentwood. And I would like to say, for the panel, excuse me for not acknowledging all the panel, the President and whoever in their respective places, good morning to all. Fatima has did a lot for Brentwood. I've been here for the time that Brentwood has been built, and I've seen the work that Fatima came in and done for the people. So I would ask the Board, would you please consider and reconsider Mrs. Fatima Johnson's position? And may y'all have a good day, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Is there any other public comment, those wishing to speak?
Through the Chair?
Yes, Ms. Hodges.
And Ariel, confirm, there is a comment in the chat. I don't know, says, this isn't, and I can, I can read it for you, I just want to make sure we get all of the public comments. This was sent, it's anonymous, 9/36. Would you like me to? Would, would you like me to read this for you?
Ms.
Or would you like to proceed with your other comments? I just wanted you to know there was a chat public comment, so you can proceed with your others if you like.
Yes, let's proceed. Is there, is the comment tagged to anybody, Ms. Hodges, or is it?
It is not tagged to anybody, but you know, it's relevant to the topic certainly and.
Forward, Ms. Hodges, but let's proceed with the balance of the public comment and then maybe we'll have you read it in.
Sure.
Once we're finished with any other public comment.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges. Any other public comments, those raising their hands or those attempting to speak, we'd ask that you speak up now before we finalize our public comment here. And I'll ask one more time, any other public comments, please? Hearing none, Ms. Hodges, if you'd be willing to read that into the record, please. It appears we have a text comment or a chat comment that was made and we'd like that in the record, please.
Right, correct. So let's see, it says, Mr. Alexander should not be the permanent CEO of the JHA. He was made aware of the use of non-valid vendors almost two years ago. Mr. A only tried to push through the payments to the invalid vendors and did not address the use of those vendors with the personnel. These were finally addressed due to the evidence provided to the OIG. I do not have access to a microphone, this is a public comment to the entire board. That's it, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges, at this time, I'll close the public comments, I'm hearing that there's no other public comment. I want to thank everybody from the community for taking the time to make those comments, it is heard. And to our residents that spoke, I think it's a great, a great point and I will, working with Ms. Brock. I look forward to meeting more of our residents and coming to some of the meetings and hearing about more things that are, that are on everybody's mind. I truly look forward to that. At this time, I think the next point on our agenda is the approval of the June and July minutes, which I don't believe we have at this point in time. I would ask Mr. Alexander, Ms. Hodges, that by the end, or excuse me, by the end of this week preferably. These minutes are circulated to the entire board so that we can review them with any comments as it's, it's, it's been sixty days since the first meeting and it's time we get these taken care of. But we will move on. I would like to address, and this is not on the agenda, but Ms. Hodges, I would, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I have the. I can take the prerogative to address something not on the agenda as Chair, correct me if I'm wrong.
Right, so through the chair, you can add an item to the agenda, if it's an item for action, you would need to open this up to the public comment. And, and just to be fair, Mr. Chair, while you were closing out the public comment. Another chat came in at nine forty, it's just one sentence and it's by a Ms. Abrams. If you want me to read that, I can, literally, it came in the chat when you were closing out the public comment.
Ms. Hodges, yes, let's go ahead, in, in fairness, since it was chatted, there was probably some level of delay, let's go ahead. And if necessary, we will take this one in for public comment, but this will be the last one we accept, Ms. Hodges.
Perfect, thank you, so this is from Ms. Sequoia Abrams. Good morning to all, please consider Mr. Alexander for president. He has displayed such a positive effect for this agency and it would be a blessing and an honor. And I would also say to the staff, since these are public records that have been created, please make sure we keep these chats. Make sure you print them out and keep them as a public record, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges. At this point, I am going to change the agenda, I'd like to bring to the commissioners' attention, I believe this is part, and Ms. Phillips. Commissioner Phillips, you bring a great point relative to our meeting minutes, but more importantly, our bylaws. So in front of the commissioners, you will see what I believe to be a redlined copy of the bylaws and Ms. Hodges, I am totally taking you off guard here, so my apologies. I would like to note that I believe, I, I was paging through these right prior to our meeting. I do believe that these reflect the changes that were made in the, I believe it was the June meeting, scheduled meeting. I am, I, I bring this up to say that we're still technically operating under our old bylaws, Ms. Hodges, is that correct?
No, so through the chair, this, the bylaws that were presented to the board in June. They were presented to the board on the agenda as an action item. And the board took action on the bylaws as amended twice. And then I was directed by the board to make those amendments. So, I mean, if you, if it makes you feel better, you didn't have the benefit of seeing the revised bylaws. But you don't necessarily need to see them, I mean, you had a clear draft of bylaws, most of the changes were pretty black and white. And so you technically are operating already under these bylaws. So you don't need to take another vote, but obviously, there's no harm in doing so.
Fantastic, so I'll just bring to the board's attentions and apologies for my ignorance, some, they were then adopted at the June twenty-first meeting. But to Ms. Phillips' point, Commissioner Phillips' point earlier. I do think that it would behoove the commissioners to make sure we've taken a look at these, understand what we're operating under. There were some changes from the past bylaws, most importantly of which, Ms. Phillips rightfully points out. It does take four votes to approve anything, so if there's only four commissioners in a meeting. That does require unanimous vote at that meeting and I want to bring that to everybody's attention. With that, we will go to the item number six on our agenda, which is the personnel matters. This has been on the agenda since the last board meeting and was brought up at our July special meeting slash retreat. I, you know, as, as the chair, I'll take a moment and just kind of put some information out. At the special retreat meeting, I was asked to gather some information about where things are, what this, what, what other agencies have done, where we are in the fact of things. And I did pull together some data. The first data point, which is previously in the record, Ms. Hodges was kind enough to provide me, is the search. The search, excuse me, the, the CEO search, thank you, Commissioner Phillips, the CEO search information. Overall, that information was informative, albeit, I would say relatively dated, it was from over eighteen, twenty-four months ago at this point. But it did have some really interesting data points in it. I also took a look, one of the things that we discussed at the meeting, and I, if I have the ability to share my screen, I can, otherwise, I'll email it to the group. This is actually a public record that I was able to track down, which I thought was also very informative of where we sit as an agency relative to other agencies. So, you know, each public housing agency is required to submit data to HUD every year on executive compensation. And what I did was, is I took a look at the top five hundred housing authorities. Which is sorted by compensation and I also went in and had the unit counts put in. So we kind of know roughly where we're at from a unit count perspective and I thought some of this information was interesting. So, the Jacksonville Housing Authority, as it sits today, oversees approximately ten thousand eight hundred units. And the last time the stated CEO salary that was reported to HUD was two oh-two-one-twenty-four, so two hundred and two thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars a year. I believe that was under the previous CEO confirming back to records. What I think is interesting is when you look at the Housing Authority of Winston-Salem, which is just ahead of us in compensation, at two hundred and five thousand dollars. They manage six thousand six hundred units. When you look at the Orlando Housing Authority that currently has five thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven units under management or affordable public housing. Two hundred and nine thousand dollars a year. When you look at the Northwest Georgia Housing Authority, one thousand six hundred and thirty-four units that they oversee. Compensation, two hundred and fourteen thousand a year. Austin Housing Authority, six, six thousand five hundred and eighty-nine units, compensation two twenty-two. As you continue to climb, I will say, for instance, the DC Housing Authority, which I find an interesting data point, center of the nation, affordable housing. They manage twenty-five thousand units, their compensation is two eighty-four. You have the Housing Authority of the City of Columbus, Ohio, five thousand units, the compensation is three hundred and fifteen thousand. All of these data points, I thought, were informative relative to where we thought a CEO salary should sit. I, I, I do believe that it would be irresponsible for us, you know, with respect to whoever sits in this position. To go out and offer them a salary that is in, you know, well in excess of what some of our peers are. However, I will say, based on this information and based on some of the CEO searches, I do think that a salary in the low two hundreds. Which I would have to ask, I believe we're there now with Mr. Alexander, would be appropriate. I also took a look and I, you know, I've been thinking about and, and really evaluating what some folks have said in meetings about some of the. You know, concerns about having a new CEO and what that performance would look like and where those things would go. And I looked at, I looked at some of the terms that CEOs are usually given, they vary. From an employment contract perspective, anywhere from two to five years with options to renew. Typically, the salary requirements are, are, you know, baked out by the board and then left to HR to negotiate the balance. But there's obviously a pay package that goes with it, you know, some sort of, excuse me, vacation times, you know, things of that nature. But hearing all of that, I, I took a look and I, you know, in speaking with a couple of members of city council who, who reached out to me to ask, you know, where things were at. And what was going on and hearing some concerns. I still believe in my heart of hearts that the right decision is to move on Mr. Alexander's appointment as CEO. I believe that the data points support us with a starting salary, in my estimation, of two hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. Along with a pay package that would be negotiated by our HR department. I will say, in deference to, for lack of a better word. Points that other people have made, that we would offer this, in my estimation, to be a one-year contract to start. Full-time with the option to the board to renew it for a full four-year term. In other words, we do a one-year evaluation, there would be standard things in any employment contract, Ms. Cook, I would assume, that would allow us to evaluate the CEO anyhow. But in deference to our community members who want to see, you know, the performance and make sure that their concerns are also heard. I think that would be a prudent place to start. However, I will say unequivocally, you know, I was very appreciative that I was elected Chair of this board. In the ninety-plus days that I've been on this board, I've seen and had numerous conversations with Mr. Alexander. Are there things that Mr. Alexander and I agree or disagree on? Certainly. Are there things that I can do better and he can do better? Absolutely. But I don't believe that belaboring this point for another six to nine months with a national search. Are going to yield a better candidate that in my estimation has the best interest of JHA. With that, I, I will, Madam, and again, Ms. Hodges, I don't believe there's any prohibition from me making a motion. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Right, through the chair, any member of the board can make a motion. If you make a motion to move forward with Mr. Alexander based upon whatever contract terms you want to be containing your motion. I would just ask that you also include a waiver of your succession plan. There are certain requirements in your succession plan, namely what the agency's been through before. Such as either hiring a search firm or appointing a CEO search committee. Whatever, if you could just include, to the extent that anything in your motion conflicts with what's in the succession plan directives, that those directives are waived.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges, so at this time, based on that information, in, in an effort to get us to a discussion standpoint. I will move that based on the information I have in front of me. That Mr. Alexander is, is offered the position as the full-time chief executive officer of the Jacksonville Housing Authority. On a contract term of one year to be renewed for an additional four-year term pending our evaluation at the end of the year. At a salary of two hundred and ten thousand dollars per year. With a compensation and or performance package that is commensurate with our HR standards of this organization. And that this motion, excuse me, and that we waive any requirements of any succession planning. And or conflicts with our CEO search policy in the past.
A second.
We have a motion and a second and at this time, I'm sure there'll be conversations, so I'll open the floor for conversation on this motion. Ms., Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I came this morning understanding that this was on the agenda, fully intending to vote not in favor. Of the selection or appointment of Mr. Alexander. I have indicated in previous meetings, I have numerous concerns about several issues. And I would say that your motion has swayed my thinking this morning. I will support it because I believe that over the next year, my concerns can be ferreted out. And it gives us an opportunity to do that.
Commissioner Phillips, I, I appreciate that and I appreciate your willingness and open-mindedness to work with, with me and Mr. Alexander on this, I appreciate that. Any other comments, Commissioner?
So I think with the one-year term, we're kind of like avoiding the issue development room. We're going to be back in square one in a year, we're going to be discussing national search. I think we need to be honest with this person. If not the four years, if you guys, if you guys think that's too long. At least the two years to twenty twenty-three, there'll be a mayoral election, probably a new board. That would make more sense, I just don't see the point, I mean, I'm in favor of him staying. But I don't see a point of a twelve-month, I don't know what we're gonna, we've now had three years to. And especially the last six months that I've been involved and I've asked my fellow commissioners, well, let's put out, what is it we disagree on? What is it that we think are the areas that Mr. Alexander should improve on? When we have a board meeting, everybody agrees that he's doing a good job when it comes to voting for this person, then it's like, ah, well, let's see what's out there. What are we going to try to accomplish with the national search, what is the job market right now? We're going to spend twenty-five, fifty thousand dollars headhunting, get a new person, it's going to take him a year to, to get familiar with the agency. So I just think that we need to shoot for a little longer term.
So, Commissioner, and I want to be, your, your point is very well taken. My thought process is, is that this is not a one-and-done. This is a one-year initial term that will automatically renew for a four-year term. Absent a decision of this board to terminate the contract. Based on, you know, the feedback that we have and everything else, so. To, to your point, it would take four members of this organization's board to terminate that contract. And I do think that, you know, that they're, they're rightly or wrongly, based on fact or based on suspicion. There are concerns around Mr. Alexander's. You know, what, what his plan is with a lot of, of the strategy of the organization, what his plan is with a lot of the employees of the organization. And in fairness to Mr. Alexander, he has not been given a chance, truly in my opinion, as the CEO to lay that out. It's never been, as an interim CEO, it would be inappropriate in my opinion for him to lay that out. But to be clear, I think your point is well-taken. If the board so chooses to move to a two-year term, I would be open to that as a friendly amendment to my motion. But I, I think, where my head is at, Commissioner, is, you know, we use this one year with an automatic renewal. Meaning it has to be, the board has to come back and vote to turn it down, otherwise it just renews. We use this as an opportunity to, to really help this board take the time to get to know Mr. Alexander from a true leadership perspective. Not that we don't already, but I've only been here ninety days, I seem to like him, but again, we agree and disagree on certain things. And that we also keep in mind that, you know, we as a board have work to do to begin to give strategic direction. And if in that one year, this board disagrees with Mr. Alexander relative to our two strategic directions. I think it gives us an opportunity to reevaluate it, but again, I am certainly open to a two-year term.
Excuse me, I, I don't mean to interrupt, I just wanted to clarify through the chair, this is Ariel Cook from OGC. So when you guys use the word term, I just want to be clear, so our office's advice, and Lisekia will jump in if she needs to correct me on anything. But we generally, you can have a contract term, meaning when that expires, you know, you will review it and decide if you want to change any terms. We advise against having an employment term. So the contract is not or should not be a guarantee of employment for the CEO. So we advise against saying, for example, Mr. Alexander is guaranteed to be CEO for one year, two years, however long. That just, you know, in our experience, has gone poorly.
Ms. Cook, thank you for clarifying that, that unfortunately, Mr. Alexander, it is not my intent to guarantee you the position for any sort of period of time, it remains in our discretion. But it is my intent to do a one-year contract term, which will then automatically renew for an additional four years. Absent this board taking direction to the contrary.
Right, and I just want to make sure, because I know, you know, sometimes in layman's term, term means something else, so just want to make sure. So for example, it would be like revisiting his salary, revisiting other perks that he may have in the contract, other contract terms, but his. may have in the contract, other contract terms, but his employment status will always be at-will and subject to board discretion at all times.
Yes, Commissioner Phillips.
And when would that, um, review take place? Would it be prior to the end of the one-year contract term?
I would, uh, Commissioner Phillips, I would suspect that we would use our yet-to-be-finalized, um, CEO, um, evaluation criteria, and given that that is supposed to be done, correct me if I'm wrong, um, annually before the end of the year, it would be my, um, humble opinion that it'll probably take us a good 30 to 45 days to finalize any contract term, um, which puts us into end of September, beginning of October. My initial instinct says that we would run this, um, quote-unquote, "contract term" through December 31 of 2022 to allow us to complete a full evaluation of Mr. Alexander in 2022.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Green?
Yes, question. So if we did a outside search and we determined that we wanted to hire a CEO, we would be employing them for three years? Or the contract would be for three years?
It, it, Commissioner Green, it depends. I mean, the, the contract terms for CEOs varies across the United States. In, in my research, I've seen it where they have done a one-year term. Um, now granted, that, that, that is the exception, not so much the rule. The more traditional terms are two to five, even six years. I, I've seen ones where you had an established CEO whose contract term comes up and they gave him a, you know, five, six, seven-year renewal. So to, to, to answer your question, are what we, is what we're doing the norm? I would say the motion on the table is not quote-unquote "the norm." Um, the norm would be to offer a two-to-three, four-year, you know, contract term. That would be the quote-unquote "norm" based on the information that I have.
So I'm, I'm kind of agreeing with Commissioner, uh, is it Mirza? I mean, he's already been an interim CEO for two years. We heard the public comments in the first meeting, it was like nine to one positive, right? So I feel like we're just kind of kicking the can down the road again, if we just do it for a year. I mean, I would, some stability for two years at least, in my opinion.
Commissioner?
But also, and this is something down, down the road, we have to define, like the evaluations last year, they were open-ended questions. We should develop a metric and say, hey, this is what, how he's gonna be scored, and it should be transparent to him of what those expectations are gonna be.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes, um, let me just back up to what you said a few minutes ago. You said that his evaluation would be done in December of 2022?
Uh, it would be my intent that the governance and would work with, the governance committee of this board would work to come up with a standard evaluation. We'd implement it, um, in 2022, um, and then he would be evaluated at the end of 2022 based on those standards. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, because we were supposed to do a 360, um, evaluation, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, his evaluation is supposed to come up, um, in September, um, of the physical years, um, year that, so that's why I was wondering when you said December, that kind of threw me. But then the other comment that I wanted to make was, um, I definitely agree with, um, my colleagues that Mr. Alexander has been here almost, um, almost three years, but definitely two and a half years as the interim CEO. And to give him a one-year term, I mean, I know, as you said, um, Commissioner, um, Chair, that as you said, that you would be working, um, with Mr. Alexander on things, I'm pretty sure that you will work with him to, I doubt, maybe some of the, the concerns or kinks, but yeah, I, I, I wouldn't agree with a one-year term, um, for him because I don't think it's fair for the amount of time that he's already put in with us. And so that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mirza?
We also have to, um, think about if we do go out for a national search, what talent are we attracting for a one-year term? If, let's pretend Mr. Alexander wasn't here, if we start from a clean slate. So that would, that's just another argument for having a longer term.
So Commissioner, Ms. Hodges, yes?
Um, through the Chair, I just wanted to, uh, remind the commissioners, because y'all have had a lot of debate on the term, that initial term. It, you, you, the better way to do it is not a friendly amendment. There's really no such thing as a friendly amendment. So if someone wants to change it, you have a motion seconded on the table. It would just be an amendment to change that initial term from one year to a two-year. You would vote on that as an amendment.
Commissioner Brock?
To the Chair, I make a motion to, um, change the term from one year to two years.
There's a motion on the table?
And that's the initial?
Yeah, there's a motion on the table to amend the, uh, current motion we're debating, uh, to amend the contract term from an initial one-year to an initial two-year term. Is there a second?
A second.
There is a motion and a second on an amendment to the motion on the table. I will now open up this motion, uh, for discussion. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none?
Chair?
Yes, Ms. Cook.
Sorry, if I could just, um, and I apologize that sometimes it's hard to get the full context when I'm on Zoom or Teams, but, um, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, um, in case there's something I need to address, the concern about having a longer term. Because again, it doesn't, like, when I hear the comments, like, he's been here for so long already and we owe this to him, I just want to make sure everyone knows he, whether we pick Mr. Alexander or you pick someone else, there is no guarantee to anyone of employment at any time. So I just don't want it to be like a, we owe him this, because that's not, I think, what we would advise you to do.
So, um, uh, thank you, Ms. Cook. So I, I want to be, um, I'm thinking about what my colleagues have said here, and I think my points of view, um, still exist. And to, to, to me, to Ms. Cook's point, whether it's a one-year term or a two-year term, if this board is unsatisfied with, you know, where we're at on the metrics, I think to me, the bigger point is, we haven't established the metrics, right? And in my mind, the one-year term was meant to be able to work with Mr. Alexander to establish those metrics and then allow the contract, contract term, not employment term, Mr. Alexander, don't get too excited, contract term, um, to roll into a formal four-year term, once we evaluated that. However, um, given Ms. Cook's well-received points, um, and I hate to say, I, I'm, I'm marginally indifferent to whether it is a one or a two-year initial contract term, solely because it is my intent as Chair to develop the criteria, um, with the governance committee and with others to have a stable evaluation, a 360 evaluation. And whether that, if that evaluation is not positive in six months or 18 months is wholly irrelevant to me. The evaluation should be what controls our decision. So, um, given that there seems to be three commissioners in favor of a, of a longer initial term, um, I will support this amendment. But to, to our commission here and to Mr. Alexander, I, I just restate that the initial term is, again, marginally irrelevant to me. It's, it's the performance, it's the concerns that might come out and need to be vetted that, that I am much more in tune with than I am an initial contract term. Commissioner Phillips? Any, I'm sorry. So we have a motion and a second on the table. We are in discussion regarding an, uh, a motion to amend the initial contract term from a one-to-two-year term. Is there any other discussions? Hearing none, I'll put this motion to amend to a vote. All those in favor of amending the contract term to a two-year term instead of a one-year term, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
We have four in favor, one opposed. Therefore, the motion to amend carries. This is now, uh, the motion that is on the table is now a, a motion to approve Mr. Alexander as a, uh, full-time CEO. Ms. Hodges, yes?
Yes, okay. Um, just before you close out this motion, I just want to make sure, um, did I hear that salary is 210? I just want to make sure I understood them.
Yeah, what I'm proposing is, um, yeah, yes, Ms. Hodges, the, the initial motion was for a salary of $210,000.
Okay, great. And, and another component of the motion was you said you wanted benefits commensurate with, um, HR standard, and I, I just wanted to be sure, because in the past, the CEO has not had a contract, so I don't know that there's any standard with respect to the CEO. So do I assume, and I just, I'm only saying this because what I intend to do, or what Ariel and I intend to do, is take these points and formalize it in a contract, so I want to make sure you all are clear on the benefits. Um, I know, like, in the CEO search committee, there was a car allowance, a phone allowance, reasonable vacation days, medical coverage and pension benefits consistent with the City of Jacksonville's plans. Um, also, I've just wanted to add, and Ariel may want to touch on this, Board of Statutes uh, does limit us to no more than 12 weeks of severance. I think, is that correct, Ariel? 12 weeks, right, of severance pay?
So, um, because of that statute, we found that exempts them from 215.
Okay, you're correct. So we don't have to worry about that. So I apologize for that. And then like Ariel said, we would roll into this contract also, um, provisions for cause. We have standard provisions for cause, correct, Ariel? I don't know if you want to take a minute. I, that's a pretty important provision that's in an employment contract. I just want to make sure that you as a board understand our standard, um, contracts. And again, this particular agency has traditionally not had a contract for a CEO, so this is really kind of all-new things for you as an agency. Ariel, could you go over the?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so, um, Lasikia and I have worked on, you know, similar contracts for other, you know, city clients or city agencies, and so when she's talking about cause, and most of you probably know this, so just forgive me if this is redundant, but, um, you know, cause would be the standard that you have to meet to terminate the employee's, uh, employment. So, um, what we generally use is, um, a pretty, what I would consider standard definition of cause. But this is an area of the contract that can be really critical, so I'm sure anyone who's lived here for more than like two years remembers the whole debacle with, um, Aaron Zahn at JEA. That was one of the particular issues that they faced, is his employment contract included a very, very specific, and what I would consider a very high standard of cause, which really limited the board's ability to act. Um, and so we obviously advise against those, um, and so we will see when, when we get to the point of circulating a draft, um, the definition that we would use, but it's, it's kind of the definition that's used for most employees, you know, um, of things you can't do or things that would give the board the authority to, um, well. So here's the other issue. And Lasikia, I don't know if you want to jump in at any point, but when you include any cause definition, you're creating a standard for yourself that you have to meet. Um, and if you're gonna have truly at-will employment, um, you don't have to have cause to terminate someone. So like, my boss could walk in here today and be like, I don't like the shirt you're wearing, you're fired. Um, that's fine, it's not great, but it's, it's legal. So anytime you include the cause definition as a, as a benchmark you have to hit, you are tying your hands a little bit. Um, and if you're gonna do that, then we would certainly recommend that you tie them at a low level. But in general, you know, without a contract, you, you as the board can terminate employment at any time, for any reason, that's not an illegal reason.
So Ms. Cook, um, thank you to, to the Board of Commissioners. So hearing this, um, and Ms. Cook, this is quasi-directed to you, but also to the rest of the Commissioners. In my mind, um, it is, it is this board's ability to terminate and hire as it sees fit. Um, and so to me, that means at-will employment. We live in the state of Florida, um, you know, welcome to the state of Florida, that's what we do here. For me, the only reason we would have a for-cause termination would be whether or not severance is paid. So if we elect to terminate Mr. Alexander for cause, the only difference is whether or not we're going to pay him the severance package or not. If we terminate him without cause, just because we don't like Mr. Alexander's coat that he's wearing today, um, then, you know, then he gets the severance package. And to me, when you are dealing with a severance package, I agree, for-cause needs to be something that is material, um, that is, uh, based on third-party information, it's not just hearsay or anything else, it's facts. Um, I can use an example, an OIG report that comes out and says Mr. Alexander is doing something inappropriate. Well, guess what? In my opinion, he loses everything. Um, sorry, Mr. Alexander. Um, but, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, Ms. Cook, and, but relative to the employment as a whole, it's my intent that this contract be completely terminable at our discretion, and the only thing that cause determines is whether or not a severance package is paid. Um, that protects the board, it also protects Mr. Alexander, um, you know, we can't just, you know, if we do fire him just because he's got a severance package to keep him on his feet for whatever's next, not our intent. But that is where I'm at. You mentioned two other things. Um, I would expect that a position of, of this nature would have PTO of, you know, four or five, six weeks of PTO, um, depending on, you know, what can be negotiated with Mr. Alexander. It would be in my intent for these contract terms, unless somebody disagrees, that the provisions, um, and package that the CEO's search firm indicated was acceptable and/or market be used as guidance. So a car allowance, benefits consistent with, um, the, you know, the City of Jacksonville, um, you know, that, that's my intent, um, but I'm certainly open to any Commissioners' thoughts on this as well, please. Ms. Brock?
Um, to the Chair, um, I, um, I'm in agreement with, um, what you have just said. I'm, I'm definitely in agreement with it, because like you say, we spent much time on this already, um, in our search when we did it.
And the next question, which I assume Ms. Cook or Ms. Hodges will ask, will then be, you know, what is the severance package? Um, you know, and my initial indication would be if we terminate him without cause, um, it should be at least a three-to-four-month, uh, package, um, you know, continued pay to three to four months. Um, he'll reasonably cooperate with any transition, um, relative to such severance. But again, to be clear, if there's cause, such package does not exist.
That's right.
What's, what's the current package? What, do you know what those benefits are?
Do we have our HR, uh, person here with us by chance who could elaborate on that? Or Mr. Alexander himself could elaborate on that. Mr. Alexander?
Um, he was, you know, didn't have a contract, and...
For those of us on the phone, we cannot hear anything that he's saying.
A little closer?
Uh, with the exception of having a title CEO, they treat it just like any other employee.
Okay.
They have a car, um, they acquire, acquire sickly leave time, same way as any other employee.
Okay. And so your current package is just at-will?
Yes.
Your salary?
Typical employee.
Okay. Understood. So, Ms. Cook, Ms. Hodges, hypothetically speaking, do you have enough working with HR, uh, and then working with Mr. Alexander, if this motion were approved, to put together a draft employment contract for this board's consideration?
Yeah, through the Chair, um, I think we have enough with that last term. You said no more than three to four months. Um, I, even though the Housing Authority, as we determine and you as a board are where it's not subject to the 215 limitation on severance, the three to four months is around what standard with every other CEO for consolidating government. So I think, you know, the three to four months is fair and it's close enough to the standard for everybody else, even though you're not bound to it. So with that, um, I do feel like we have enough to draft the contract. Ariel, do you have any thoughts?
The only other thing I wanted to, to raise, and I, I think it's on the agenda under a separate bullet, but to the extent, Lasikia and I had talked about it as potentially being a contract term, is, um, the issue of any retroactive pay. So, um, and I think, uh, Mr. Chairman, this happened.
If, if I may interrupt, um, I'd like to take that under a separate, uh, a separate point, if, if we may.
Sure.
Thank you. So there is a motion on the table, it has been seconded. At this time, I'll call the question, uh, absent anybody else wanting to debate the point. All those in favor, um, to appoint and offer the position of full-time CEO to Mr. Dwayne Alexander for a salary of $210,000 for a two-year term, um, along with the other points, um, that Ms. Hodges has. If there's any question on those points, please let me know. Uh, signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Alexander, the motion carries. This board's action has, uh, offered you the position as full-time CEO of this organization. We look forward to you working with, uh, Ms. Cook and Ms. Hodges to finalize a contract. We look forward to you working with Ms. Cook and Ms. Hodges to finalize a contract. And it may be premature, but congratulations. We look forward to working with you, sir.
So through the Chair, just one quick question. Is the idea to come back at the September meeting with an actual contract for the board to look at and review? Or are you intending for us to draft it? Fine, oh, go ahead. Yes.
I, I am intending that you and Mr. Alexander and Ms. Cook, along with our HR team, will draft a contract to bring back to this board. The position has been offered within the constraints of these terms. We'll take a look at that contract and formally approve it. But the position has been offered and absent, you know, terms inconsistent with that, it will be extended to Mr. Alexander. One point that I would like to make, Ms. Hodges, Ms. Cook, and Mr. Alexander, given that this is something that is critical, I would hope that we could get a draft contract to us in the next 10 to 14 days. I know that's aggressive, but I would sincerely appreciate it if, if our team would iron out these details so we have them well in advance. So we have any questions, comments, et cetera.
Sure. Great, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we did select Mr. Alexander or offer him the position of the full-time CEO. One of the questions that's on the agenda, which do respect to Mr. Alexander, I'm going to, I don't think I need, I'm not going to address absent a board member and wanting an independent motion, is the retroactive pay. Do respect, Mr. Alexander, I appreciate that the retroactive pay, you know, may be of interest. However, in my opinion, your title was interim. You were here serving on that basis. And we look forward to working with you in the future. But absent one of my colleagues wanting to address retroactive pay, I'm inclined to let this sit. Ms. Brock, I'm sorry.
To the Chair, I, I wanted to address that because at the time that we did the, first of all, at the time that we did his review, it wasn't his fault that his review was done late. It was the Board of Commissioners' fault that his review was done late. So to say that we're going to withhold the monies that he was working all the time for, because our legal team, and I want to thank Ms. LaZekia for diligently searching that because in the past, we have always retroact back our staff to the physical year October 1. And that's what Mr. Alexander pay was supposed to be retroacted back to October 1. And they thought, our legal team thought that you could not pay for work that was already done. But the Housing Authority doesn't fall up under that. So that's why this was put back on the agenda so that we could approve for him to get his money for 202021.
So, thank you, Ms. Brock. So maybe I misunderstood. So Ms. Hodges and Ms. Cook, would you, can you elaborate on this, please?
Right. So, so I think in years past, the evaluation goal for the CEO has been to do it in October. And in the past, there has been, I think according to what I've heard from Commissioners, retroactive pay. This year, Mr. Alexander's evaluation was not done, I believe, until March or maybe a little, somewhere around, much, much after October. And so one of the questions asked was if they're giving, if they did give him a raise as part of that evaluation, they asked, can we make the raise retroactive to October? Since that's when we were supposed to do his eval and we just did, they just didn't get it done. They had other things going on. Our office advised them, no, under Florida statute 215.425, you're not allowed to give retro pay to anyone. Since then, LaZekia discovered that there's kind of this odd statute that exempts all housing authorities from 215.425. And so we, I contacted the Commissioners and let them know that 215 does not apply. And so if it's something they want to revisit, so basically, based on our advice, they did not give him retro pay for October through whatever day his raise was effective. And so that when they asked us, we said, yes, if you want to revisit that, that would be legal under 215. So it's not relating to interim or permanent. It's just relating to the delay in his evaluation.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. So do we understand, so just to parrot back to you, Ms. Cook, so I understand. So what we're talking about is a raise that was approved by this board, which has not been applied due to the lack of a, I'll call it a formal, a formal review. Is that a consistent?
It was applied prospective from the review date in the spring. What they had, what they think they would have considered, I don't know how the board would have voted, was whether or not they could make it retro to October, which is when the review should have been done. So there's like a, however many months that is, three-month, six-month period. So he only got the raise going forward. And to the extent the board has the appetite to do it going backwards, we are just correcting ourselves that yes, you can do that if you want to do that.
Ms. Brock, did you?
Yes, because it was right for us to do it. We'd have did it then. But like I say, our legal team thought that we would be, they advised us that we could not do that because we could not pay for work that was already done. But as I said, ever since I've been sitting on this board with our staff here at the Housing Authority, when their raises come, time come up and we don't get them in, in time, they always retroact them back to October 1. That's since I've been on this board.
Understood. So Ms. Brock, thank you for that, that institutional knowledge. That is very helpful. Given that, I suppose I will leave it out there and not remove it from the agenda. Is there any motion on this then, at this point in time? I'll entertain any motions on the retroactive pay.
I make a motion, Chair, that we retroact back Mr. Alexander pay to October 1, 2020, to the months that he lost in his back pay.
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to grant Mr. Alexander his retroactive pay increase, which goes back to when the evaluation should have been delivered. Is there any discussion on this point? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving Mr. Alexander's retroactive play, please signify by saying aye.
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 The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Brock, Ms. Cook, Ms. Hodges, for bringing that to my attention. I think the last item of the personnel matters is the special meeting dates to review and finalize the evaluation policy. We're about to move into the governance matters where I'd like to have this. We're going to appoint the folks to the standing committees, and I'd like to move this item into a standing committee. So at this point, I'm going to defer what is on the agenda as 6D to a moment here. Next on the, on the agenda is the governance matters. We have the standing committee assignments. First, I want to thank everybody. I know with our special meeting, some interest was expressed. I do think these are going to be very important that the business of this board gets back into some committees so the committees can bring essentially approved items. One thing that I want to be clear, Mr. Alexander, going forward, and Ms. Hodges and Ms. Cook and the rest of my Commissioners, please keep me honest to this, which is, is if there is a resolution or something that needs to be approved that has not come out of committee, it is my intention that this board will not vote on it. Now, if the committee disapproves it and you want it put on the agenda for full board consideration, that is fine. But it is my intent that these matters go through committees first, so they can be vetted, so we can use our board time here wisely. And one other thing, and I know, I think, I won't speak for Commissioner Phillips, but I think she feels this way, especially as Vice Chair. If there are resolutions, contracts, terms, yours notwithstanding, that this board needs to consider, it would be appreciated that not only are they delivered at least one meeting in advance. In other words, if you need something approved for December, I would expect the first reading to be in October so that we can look at it, read it, ask questions, have a review in the open, and then we can review and consider it final in November. So 60 days in advance of the month where this, where the staff, this is for senior staff as well that needs to be done, I'd be very appreciative so we can keep to the business at hand. At this time, though, I will, I'd like to go ahead and start with the finance committee. Instead of just assigning, I will ask, are there any Commissioners that would be willing to serve on the Standing Committee for Finance for the JHA organization? Yes. So I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Hodges, oh wait, we have bylaws for this, Commissioner. I'm so glad you asked. Let me take it. Do you remember off the top of your head? Yeah, I think it's at least two, correct?
It could be more.
Can be more, but certainly at least two. So it's my hope that we could have at least three Commissioners on each, on each committee, simply so you have an odd number in case there's a vote needed at the committee.
At least one or more.
Well, at least one or more, yeah. But at this time, are there any members that are interested in serving on the finance committee of this organization, please?
I can do it.
Thank you, Mr. Green. I have one volunteer. Any other volunteers? Ms. Brock, am I seeing you volunteer as well? That's two volunteers. No, ma'am. You can serve on them all if you so choose, although I don't recommend it. So I have two. I know Ms. Annabelle, our Commissioner Fernandez is not on the line, but it would seem to be prudent that our, one of our other finance experts serve on the finance committee. So I'll use my discretion as board chair to also appoint her to that committee. So we have three members on the finance committee, Mr. Green, Ms. Brock, and Ms. Fernandez. Mr. Green?
We went over these in that retreat?
We did.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Although we didn't appoint anybody in that retreat. We just discussed who would be on them. Based on my recollection, correct, Ms. Hodges?
Yeah, through the Chair, based on my recollection, I don't, I'm not, you discussed it. I'm not certain you actually got volunteers outright during that retreat discussion.
Moving on to the next Standing Committee assignment is the Governance and Oversight Committee. I myself would like to serve. I see Ms. Commissioner Phillips would like to serve. Do I have a third Commissioner? And I'm, I'm going to butcher it. Palakovich. Commissioner Palakovich as well. There are three. Does anybody else would like to serve on the Governance and Oversight Committee?
Yes.
Ms. Brock. So we have four on the committee. Anybody else? Fantastic. I'll take those four volunteers for the Governance and Oversight Committee, Ms. Hodges. Last but certainly not least is the Tenant Relations Committee. I would ask, Ms. Brock, certainly I would hope that you'd be able to serve on that committee as well. Commissioner Phillips, I would sincerely appreciate your insight. Is there a third person who can serve on the Tenant Relations Committee, please?
I will choose to do that.
Commissioner Green, thank you very much for your service. Anybody else? Hearing none, I will take those three volunteers and appoint them as well to the Tenant Relations Committee. There are no other committees, but I will pause. If any Commissioner believes we need a third committee for anything at this point in time, you know, I'd love to hear your thoughts, but these are the three standing committees, which I think can do most of the work of the board. But I'll pause to see if there's any comments, questions, concerns. Commissioner Phillips?
As needed, oftentimes organizations such as this board of Commissioners will have ad hoc committees, including a Personnel or HR Committee and those types of things. And one of my concerns is that we've, at least as one Commissioner, I have received a lot of feedback and concerns from employees. And I think that looking to impanel a HR committee that might address some of those issues might be a good idea.
Commissioner Phillips, I think that, I think that's prudent. So at this point, I will, and again, I have not memorized the bylaws yet, but I believe, Ms. Hodges, correct me if I'm wrong, can I create an ad hoc committee?
Yes.
Fantastic.
Through the Chair, you can. Let me just, I'm sorry, just one little quick point. Remind you when you're done getting members for the HR Committee that you also are authorized to appoint the Chair and the Vice Chairs of these committees. So let's not leave without you doing that either.
Fantastic. Thank you, Ms. Hodges. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and ask that we create what we'll call a Human Resources Ad hoc Committee. It will remain standing until, until we no longer see the need fit. One of the things, Commissioner Phillips, I think I would appreciate your volunteer service on this. I would also appreciate, would like to be on this as well. And I think one of the things this commission, excuse me, this committee should undertake is, is part of the CEO evaluation process. This seems prudent that, you know, an HR Committee would help figure out the 360 evaluation of our, of our CEO. And also as a, as a committee, figure out what, you know, what ability people have to make, you know, express their concerns in a confidential way that, that we understand that, that maybe nobody else, you know, can deal with. But so at this point in time, I'll point myself to that commission. Commissioner Phillips, I'd like to appoint you the Chairwoman of that committee as well. Ms. Brock, I see you raising your hand as well. Is that, you'd be willing to serve? Anybody else want to serve on that committee? Hearing none, I will circle back. For the Governance and Oversight Committee, I'd like to go ahead and appoint myself as Chair of that committee, Ms. Hodges, and ask Ms. Phillips to serve as the Vice Chair of that committee. For the Finance Committee, Commissioner, are you, are you on the Finance Committee, Commissioner? You're not. You're in the Governance. Commissioner Green, I'd love if you would serve as the Chair of the Finance Committee, if you're willing to serve. I promise there's not much to do.
Yes.
Don't believe me. And I'd like to nominate or appoint Ms. Fernandez. See what happens when you don't show up? You just get appointed. Ms. Fernandez is the Vice Chair of that committee, Ms. Hodges. Which I believe fills out your, oh, and I'm sorry, I'd like to, Tenant Relations.
Yes.
Ms. Brock, if you'd be willing to serve as the Chairwoman of that, of that committee, the Tenant Relations Committee?
Okay.
Or, okay, fantastic. Ms. Phillips, Vice Chair. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Does that fill out your chairmanship, Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Unless there's any other comments, we'll move on to item on the agenda 7B, Presentation of Board Approved Bylaws of the Office of General Counsel. Ms. Hodges, would you like to walk us through this and point out anything you think needs to be drawn to our attention, please?
Sure. So I don't know if Dwayne can put the red line on the screen so that we can go through this, or if you have it next to you.
Ms. Hodges, I think we all have a copy of the red lines. Does anybody have a copy of the red line or the bylaws?
Yes.
Fantastic.
Okay, perfect. So as the Chair stated, what you have before you in the form of a red line really memorializes the two amendments that occurred at the June meeting to the bylaws that were presented to you. And so you'll see, you know, very quickly, primarily on the first three pages, me removing the duplicative language that repeats what's in the state statute and your ordinance code. And we simply do a reference to the Act and to the ordinance code. So under, and so compensate, so sections, Article 3, Article 4, Article 5, all had the same similar language removed. Under Article 6, you can recall 6.2, we changed your election time. That's why you're doing elections in August, because we changed it from September to August. We also in 6.2B, there was language in there that basically stated that if the Chair is absent, the Vice Chair would automatically be the Chair. The board in the June meeting wanted an election to occur should the Chair be absent past the 90 days. Under Board Staff, more language that we removed. This is Article 7 in the document. And just made a reference to the state statutory language or state statutory reference. And then in 8.3, this is on page 5, this was one of my amendments that I proposed to just make it consistent with some of the other paragraphs where the board would be able to meet at other places outside of its meeting place and in other manners. 8.6, this is where, I tweaked this just slightly, but we left in the affirmative vote because in the June meeting, that motion that was made by Commissioner Walker failed. And so that language stays in the bylaws, but I've only clarified it to state that it's at least for affirmative votes that's needed. 8.7, I need it for legal purposes and the board was okay with it, adding a reference to other applicable laws, including Chapter 189 that this board is governed by. And then under Article 9, we had a lot of changes here, really with the Chair appointing the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Standing Committees. And we removed the language where you had automatic sort of ex officio chairs and vice chairs, depending on what position you served at the executive level. And other cleanup, you know, just not really much to mention. But just cleaning up the language to make it a little bit more succinct, you see that throughout Sections 9.2 and 9.3, as well as 9.4. And Mrs. Brock had a few typos in 10.1, and I didn't mention it, Mrs. Brock, you also had typos. I think in the first section, those were corrected. And then the very last thing, I simply added a statement to make it very clear that these bylaws supersede all prior bylaws and, you know, made a reference to the effective date of the bylaws. So the, so the board accepts these changes and no one has any comments. Of course, if you have comments, you can go ahead and, you know, move to amend the bylaws. But if everybody's okay with the way that this red line's presented, you don't need to do anything because you actually approved this at your June meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges. For me, I don't have any comments or requested changes to the bylaws. I think this is a great landing spot. I do see the wisdom in having the minimum four vote requirements of people present, so unless there is any need for discussion or changes, I'd ask that we move on the agenda, since these have previously been approved. Any Commissioners have any questions? Thank you, Ms. Hodges. Mr. Alexander, I do believe it is your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll make it quick. On the CEO report, just giving a brief update, the auditors will be here next month to give a presentation. They basically are still closing out on some of the issues that we had. Just to put, I also put at the note, noted in that paragraph that HUD did extend the audit until 12/21, so we still on time. In terms of, we, we did receive the 1.5 million-
Mr. Alexander, one second. On the audit, I just want to be clear, when you say, again, compliance issue from previous year has been corrected.
Yes.
So this will be a clean audit, there's no questions, the auditors have been satisfied. Where's Mr., where's Dennis? Is Dennis here? Hi, Dennis. There's no questions on the financials, there's no red flags, there's no going concerns, nothing like that, correct? Fantastic. Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Alexander.
Thank you. Also, I mentioned a couple months ago that we did receive the 1.5 million dollars for the emergency vouchers. Just wanted the Board to know that we've been working with the Mental Health Resource Center, Change in Homelessness, and the Hubbard House, and COJ, and we issued more than 100 packets. We do have 196 emergency vouchers. Those vouchers actually go through the continuing care, and they send the referrals over to us, and we had issue 100 of those packets, and so the progress is being made. In terms of, we had a remote audit with the Community Planning Development Department, the grant, which was monitored by the COC grant, and the project was named underneath the Shelter Plus. That project was closed out. We had no issues underneath that program, so that audit was clean. In terms of Centennial Townhouses, the Rad Project, from the ninth to the 14 floors, the floors are completely completed. I would advise or encourage any of the commissioners to go over and take a look at the site. It's beautiful, and residents have moved back in from the ninth to the 14th floor. Eighth floor is currently being worked on. And over at Hogan Creek, the Rad Project, contractors have completed 14, 15, and 16, well, they're actually working on 14, 15, 16 floor, and they were working on the two sample units, and if any of the commissioners like to go over and take a look at the sample units, they are coming out real nice. And then we have another response that OIG inquiry is sitting out there for a while. That is due on the 25th, and as we have done in the past, make sure that we submit all the documents as required by that one inquiry.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
Thank you.
Can I ask what the outstanding issues are with the OIG that will be?
It was just some, some verifications. It was some verifications that they were asking that we provide the verifications to them on.
Verification of what subject matter, I guess?
With personnel. Without going into detail, whatever. If you would like to talk after the meeting, I'd love to talk to you about it, but they want to some, add some inquiries. They sent it out, I think you, all of you have received a copy-
Yeah. Commissioner Phillips, to your point, just, just to clarify, this is not a new, is this a new OIG report? It is not?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Something new.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Phillips. Any other questions from the Commissioners? Fantastic. Hearing none, we will move on to item number nine under our agenda, which is New Business. Commissioner Phillips?
A quick question. How much, I see we, again today, thank you for being here, have court reporter here. How much are we paying for the court reporter to?
I want to say close to about $1,200, if that's it.
Yeah.
Last meeting, I asked a question about why we had a court reporter present. Commissioner Walker, you indicated that you have went back and looked at some of the older meeting minutes and those kinds of things, and in preparation for today's meeting, I too went back and looked at some minutes and some other things. And there's a great concern, and there has been an ongoing concern. It was a part of the OIG report of problems with record keeping for the organization and that kind of thing. I'd like for us to direct Mr. Alexander and the staff to come back to us in September with a plan for record keeping that is consistent with the requirements, whether it's notice of meetings, how we're going to, to maintain our records, who's going to be accountable and responsible for it. I think with an organization this size, we ought to have someone on this staff who can maintain our records in keeping with what is required, without us having the additional expense of having to have a court reporter to record our board meetings.
Yeah, Commissioner Phillips, thank you. I concur, although I might come down slightly different on the court reporters, just because I'm an attorney. I think they have a knack for collecting information. But I will say, you know, at the end of the day, it is this, it is this organization's responsibility to keep their records. So Mr. Alexander, it would be helpful if you could direct, what I think, and I don't think we need a motion, I think we can just direct you to do this, but it would be helpful if you could appoint a person on your staff, preferably not you, Mr. Alexander, simply because this is, you've got more important things to deal with at this point, that will be the record keeper, that will be responsible, and that we know is taking care of many meetings and notices. Ms. Phillips, I will recommend that we keep using the court reporter in the interim till we make sure we have a plan in place, because I do not want to miss things going on here, and we can discuss that. But it would be helpful to know who the, who the person is that you're going to assign this task to. I'm also going along these lines, I apologize, Ms. Brock, one second, along these- should not come to us unless legal has reviewed and approved anything, and it is my expectation that board packets will be out to the Board two weeks in advance of our meetings, not one. And I know that's a lot of work for senior staff, but I would appreciate them doubling down and buckling down on that. It, it is helpful. For a volunteer board, you know, we need a little bit more time to review it and get to the information, so that would be very much appreciated if we could put that into place for our September meeting. Any Commissioner, one second, I apologize. Commissioner Brock?
Yes, to the Chair. I just wanted to point out that a part of our bylaws is that we can hire a secretary for the Board, and so, again, with Mr. Alexander's assistance, we definitely could hire someone. If we don't have anyone here at the agent already that can do it, we can hire a secretary for our Board.
Thank you, Ms. Brock. Commissioner Phillips, anything else?
Other comment is that included in that would also be, from a transparency perspective, making sure that the minutes are timely posted, as well as the recordings of the meeting, which, it's my understanding, should also be posted on our website.
Commissioner Phillips, I think you're correct. Ms. Hodges and Ms. Cook, or more so Ms. Hodges, is that correct, that they should be posted within a certain period of time?
Right. Well, I mean, minutes are not actually required to be posted necessarily, but I can, you know, you're required to have minutes in place so that if the public wants to see them, you know, they have access to the minutes. I mean, I have to go back, and I've sent Dwayne all the information on Chapter 189, which gets very specific. That's a specific statute that addresses dependent districts like this agency and the level of accountability and transparency. So I would just say, as Mr. Alexander knows, he's got to have this agency on board with all those requirements that's laid out in 189, which is way more stringent than actually 286. The other thing, while you're on this topic, did you guys approve item five, the approval of the minutes? If so, I had some corrections to the June-
We did not.
Okay. Okay.
Actually, Commissioner Phillips, you make a great point. So let's use our committee assignments wisely. As a matter of fact, as Chair of the Governance Committee, why doesn't the Governance Committee, which I believe both of the Commissioners across from here are on, why don't we meet in the next week or two and outline with Mr. Alexander what our expectations are? Ms. Hodges, if you'd be so kind as to kind of summarize the applicable statutory references of what should be happening for our meeting minutes, and then we can decide how best, you know, to give our guidance and insight, and Mr. Alexander, you can do the same. So, Mr. Alexander, if you would coordinate with myself and the other Commissioners on the Governance and Oversight Committee for a meeting in the next 10 days, and we can meet and do the, do that. I think that's a wise idea, Commissioner Phillips. And I will say to the Chair, just circling back for a second, to the various Chairs of the committees, I will task and ask that you please coordinate your meeting minutes, excuse me, coordinate your meetings through Mr. Alexander and, and begin to process those things that might be put to your committees. So please, please coordinate with Mr. Alexander on those. Commissioners, any other new business? I have a few items. Shocking, I know. All right. So I will, under New Business, Mr. Alexander, you and I previously talked about, but I would just want to be on the, on the record, so to speak, about this. You know, I am very excited for what this agency can do in the community, and there's a couple of things that I think we, as a Board, need to talk about and give you some direction on. The first of which is, I would expect and, and hope that senior staff is able to attend the other agencies that work in the realm that we're doing their meetings. So DIA, relative to multifamily investments in downtown, JHFA, relative to approving financing for affordable housing elsewhere, not to per se interrupt their meetings or, or speak out of turn, but to help us understand what they are doing, so we have context in what we are doing. It is my hope, you know, Mr. Alexander, that we can begin a dialogue, a true dialogue, as consolidated government with other agencies, and talk about how we can all work cooperatively together. So I would ask that going forward, a member of senior staff attend those meetings and prepare a report to you, that if anything of interest should come up, you bring it to our, to our attention, which would be fantastic. The next thing, which is still on my mind tremendously, I've had the opportunity to speak with several members of City Council regarding the, what I'll say, lackluster response this agency has had relative to some of our, you know, failing properties, which admittedly are not ours. Let me be clear, they are not our properties. And one of the things that continually is asked, that was asked of me in meeting with them, is why aren't we doing anything? To which I respond, they're not ours. However, Ms. Hodges has presented and previously informed the Board that we do have the power and authority to monitor and evaluate and ask for information about some of these properties, which, while they're not our properties, this agency is intended to be the lead on affordable and public housing in Duval County, and is intended to help monitor those things. So one of the things, Mr. Alexander, which I would like you to work on with Ms. Hodges, is to come up with a list of questions or properties and information that we should be asking for to help monitor these things. I mean, we have the staff, which, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe, and I'm gonna remember, is it Ms., Mr. Hayes is with HUD?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes noted that we're in the top 1% of the nation relative to HUD performance, and yet we are not performing some of our more at-risk residents here in town, albeit not our properties. So I would ask that you begin to put together some sort of an evaluation or a checklist, or what we could be doing, working with code enforcement. I mean, when we should have notice of these things, notice what's going on, so that if necessary, if we can't get the answers that we politely ask for, this Board can use its subpoena power. Granted, they may not respond, that is a them problem and not an us problem, but it is our responsibility, in my opinion. I would entertain other Commissioners' thoughts on this, because I do think this is a, an area that we are not doing anything in, and there may be some questions whether we should be in this area. Mr. Phillips?
I would just caution that we are a high-performing housing authority, and that we make sure that when we are making plans to move into this realm, that we have the sufficient staff and manpower in order to undertake this additional workload that will not impact our current residents and the quality of the housing, that the Housing Authority, I think, is first charged with ensuring that the, the Jacksonville Housing Authority residents and work is prioritized and made a priority. And certainly, we can and we have, in the past, there have been many opportunities where the Housing Authority and the former Jacksonville Housing Department were involved in the housing roundtables that, of the past, oftentimes when there have been problems, such as we have seen with Eureka Gardens and with Hilltop, it was the Housing Authority who relocated all of those individuals. And so there have been some of that in the past that has been done, and I think that it is time for the Housing Authority to step up again and lead the charge, and maybe bring together all of these organizations and look at processes that we might put in place, working with code enforcement and other departments of city government in order to improve the status of those properties not owned by the Jacksonville Housing Authority.
Commissioner Phillips, music to my ears, and you brought up something which is interesting to me. You said there used to be a roundtable? Did JHA take lead on that roundtable?
I don't know that we were the lead, but we were certainly a partner in it. I believe it was the Jacksonville Housing Partnership at the time that was the lead agency that brought together all of the players as a part of the housing roundtable. And the Housing Partnership is now morphed into, it was an outgrowth of Lutheran Social Services, and it's morphed into HAVJAX at this point.
Okay. So Commissioner Phillips, I think that's actually a great idea. I mean, why aren't, the question, why aren't we, perhaps we should, I mean, perhaps we should be the lead and invite a roundtable led by JHA around affordable, public, clean, safe, living housing in Jacksonville. There's no reason that we can't be the lead on that and take lead. We invite members of all the apartment communities, including, without exception, the ones that, for better or worse, make the news, and have a conversation. There may be resources that we can collectively put together that'll make a difference. So, Mr. Alexander, I would, I would hope that you would also work towards putting that together for us and give us a report by the next board meeting, which I think is in a whopping three weeks, four weeks, that will look as an outlook on how you're going to organize this, who you intend to invite, have you communicated with those parties you're intent to put together a roundtable? I think that would be a wise. Is there any other comments on that? Commissioner Phillips, that was, thank you, that was very helpful.
And just, I'm not gonna say I'm old, but I do have a bit of institutional knowledge.
No, Mr. Commissioner Phillips, it's institutional knowledge. There's no such thing as old.
Institutional knowledge about it, and be happy to meet with Mr. Alexander, to give him more background and assist in any way I can in doing that.
That'd be great, Commissioner. Any other thoughts on, on that front? Mr. Alexander, do you feel like you have a, a direction that you're supposed to head with that?
Yes.
Fantastic. Next piece of new business that I'd like to bring to the Board's attention. I have been approached through a private party. You all are familiar with Roosevelt Gardens, I believe, which is not a great, not a great chapter in Jacksonville's affordable housing history. That property appears to be up for sale. It is currently completely defunct, and I'm talking, based on what I've been able to see, there's, you know, the, I mean, defunct when I say potentially mold issues, potentially people living there that don't have anywhere else to go, homeless folks that don't have anywhere else to go. But it is something that is being offered, or, or is potentially being offered to the public, that I think would be a great example of what this organization can do, which is to find a way to take a property that is an eyesore at the moment and convert it into either public or affordable housing. I don't know what that looks like, Mr. Alexander. I don't know how you finance it. I have thoughts about how you could finance it. I don't know if HUD would issue the vouchers to do that for a project-based contract, but I do know, in my opinion, it is worth looking into. So I would like to understand from senior staff the viability of something like this, reaching out to the ownership groups, figuring out if there's a way to buy it, partner it, but it's currently, I mean, I mean, if you drive by it, it is not something that any one of us would willingly walk into and stay overnight.
I'm pretty sure that this Housing Authority actually helped to relocate the people out of there when it was closed down, actually.
Yeah. And, and Mr. Alexander, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's been probably a decade since this organization added new units to the affordable and/or public housing stock. Is that correct?
I would believe so, yes.
Okay. Not to say that's a bad thing, but there's an opportunity for us to do something here, so I would- So I would, I would ask that you work with senior staff, that by the next board meeting, you have reached out, spoken with somebody, figured out what, you know, what a structure would look like, to the extent I can help facilitate that in any which way, or, you know, provide insight, I'm happy to do so, along with any member of this, of this commission. But that is something that I would hope that we can at least understand what's in front of us. Any other, those are the new business points that I had. Ms. Brock?
To the chair, I just only, if you don't have any more points, I wanted to close, I mean, I wanted to ask you if I can make a statement to the Board of Commissioners. I gave all of you a letter for Saturday. I asked you, if you would, if you're going to sponsor some of the seniors in our next board meeting, September meeting, I would appreciate, if not, you can mail it in to the address that is at the top of the letter. Your checks can be made payable to the resident advisory board. So it's all in the letter, the information is, and so, if you so desire, we would gladly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And certainly, as a new commissioner, I'm excited, I've never participated in that, but it looks like a great, great opportunity. So, thank you, Ms. Brock, Commissioner Brock. I have one other thing, so, of course, I know you're all shocked. So, Mr. Alexander, it was brought to my attention, thank you for bringing this to my attention. I was speaking with Mr. Alexander and just asking staffing levels, Commissioner Phillips, to your point, you know, are we fully staffed? Do we need more people? And the answer is, I think we have some positions that we could fill, some things that we could do to increase. But what came to my attention, Mr. Alexander, which I was actually not aware of, and I appreciate you bringing it to my attention, is the fact that we have over 30 or 40 employees that are not under this roof. Is that accurate, Mr. Alexander?
Yes, about 30, you have to say yes.
And any members of senior staff that are not?
Yes, yes.
So, one of the things, from a culture perspective, which I think this board should be a driver in, is the culture of this organization and the professionalism. Having had two offices that I had to oversee, it is very difficult, in my opinion, to mesh cultures and personalities and people when you're not under one roof. I would highly encourage you, Mr. Alexander, to work with senior staff to either come up with a plan to consolidate that, and we can look at what to do with that real estate. But I think it is extremely important that we have our employees and colleagues of JHA under one roof, under one set of leadership, and to be part of that. Now, I understand that we may not necessarily have the space in this building, but I would ask, as part of your planning, to look at the alternatives for that. Does that mean we need to reorganize here, redo something here? Does that mean we need different space? Does that mean we need to improve something? I also want to draw to your attention, Mr. Alexander, that the city of Jacksonville has surplus lands. We should be looking at that as well, to see if there's any use that we can use of those. But, you know, certainly for me, I would expect a strategic plan as to how to consolidate everything down, shrink our overhead footprint to the extent possible. That's only more money that we'd be able to use elsewhere, and bring staff under one central location. I would welcome any commissioners' thoughts on this as well, please.
Obviously, you're not talking about.
No, ma'am. Staff is there, yeah. I'm talking the administrative staff, Commissioner. You have a great point.
Like our HR people are over on golf here, or whatever, and those kinds of things.
Yes. And I should say, Mr. Alexander, nothing, nothing is for free, right? So I fully anticipate that part of this ask and part of your analysis will be a financial cost analysis of this, because I understand that this is not something we can do with, you know, a pickup truck, so to speak. Any other comments from the commissioners?
To the chair.
Yes, Commissioner Brock.
I believe you said it in our last meeting, you were talking about remodeling this building here. And I guess that would be one of the things that we could definitely, Mr. Alexander could definitely take a look at, to see if maybe he can expand this building a little bit out to create some more office space. That may be one of the, one of the things, as well as when you said about the land that is around the city, that's totally rebuilding a new location.
Yeah. Commissioner Brock, that's a great point. And again, to be clear, it, I think it's the culture issue and the transparency issue and the communication issues that I'm focused on. You know, this building certainly serves its purpose, and it doesn't, doesn't have to be glamorous, but we should have our people under one roof, in my opinion. Any other new business questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll close out the new business. Mr. Alexander, I think you've got your footprint. I'd like to say, on behalf of me, you know, for what it's worth, I think you can see that this board is, is, for lack of a better word, thanks to Ms. Brock, Ms. Phillips, Commissioner Iammerza, because I'm not going to get it right, Commissioner Green, Commissioner Fernandez, Commissioner Griggs. I will get it right one day, Commissioner, I promise. But we're putting ourselves in a posture to be productive, to be professional, to drive results, and more importantly, to serve the residents of this community, which is exactly what city council and the mayor's office have tasked us with. I would ask that you take back to senior staff the new resolve of this board, because at least while I'm sitting here and supported by my commissioners, lackluster will not cut it. We have a lot of work to do here in the city of Jacksonville. I do want to commend you for sticking around as long as you have, and Lord help you putting up with me, at least for the next year as Chair. But I look forward to working with you. Unless there's any other comments, I'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting of the Board of Directors, Board of Commissioners for the Jacksonville Housing Authority at 11:06 a.m. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Chair.